We'll commence today's proceedings with swearing in of our new District Two Council member.
Firm, please.
Okay. I take your name.
I, Paling Koen.
To solemnly affirm.
To solemnly affirm that.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The Office of City Council.
The Office of City Councilor.
For the city of Montpelier.
For the city of Montpelier.
And will therein do equal right.
Will do in. Could you please speak?
And and will therein.
And will therein.
Equal right.
Do equal right.
And justice.
And justice.
To all.
To all people.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
And I also.
And I also.
Sow this parent.
Solemnly swear.
That I will be true.
That I will be true.
And faithful.
And faithful.
To the state of Vermont.
To the state of Vermont.
And that I will not.
That I will not.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Do any act or thing.
Do any act or thing.
Injurious.
Injurious.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Thereof.
Thereof.
As established.
As established.
By convention.
By convention. So help me God.
You don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting? Oh, congratulations, Counselor Cohen. Now, call, call the meeting to order. We will, I'll review the logistics. We will, if you're joining remotely, please change your name on screen to your first and last name. So you can be addressed properly when you speak either in person or remotely. Please start by stating your name and where you live. We ask that you keep your comments or questions to two minutes. And Counselor Bate will assist us in keeping time. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to the topic at hand. Anyone who wishes to be, speak, to speak must be recognized by the Chair. Once you are recognized, you can make a statement or ask questions. But we do not consider public comment to be an opportunity for debate. If you speak out of turn, discuss non-german topics, go on too long, you may be interrupted and asked to adjust your comments or behavior. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is anyone aware of any changes we should be making to the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is approved. First item on the agenda is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council about any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Again, we ask speakers to limit their comments to two minutes. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to be, to address the council? Steve?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
The website still needs, the website needs a committee of informed people to debate whether to switch software. That software is a dog. It's not conducive to participation or finding things. There's like four-point type in the window and fourteen, sixteen-point type in the left panel. It's just a mess. It, there is good software out there that doesn't download every document with some gibberish, but actually maintains the name of the document you're downloading, therefore expediting participation. The garbage, the trash problem has been recurring. The garbage cans overflow, the contractor apparently is not on our schedule that works. The dog crap sits on top, gets knocked off, gets run over. It's, it's a mess. And it seems like I'm the only one to notice the Christmas litter, the wreaths that blew down, the ribbons that blew down and were laying in the street. Just, it's as if no one who is responsible and getting paid to keep this stuff tidy is, is present. The mud has piled up again in the Elm Street crosswalk, Elm Street at State. Because I, I think it's five or six years now, I've been saying that those, that was ground down too low. The drainage doesn't hit the drain, the ice builds up. It's, again, mismanagement on a grand scale. CBPSA, I, I ask that you do the right thing and direct your two representatives, Doug Hoyt and Justin Breschler, to not move to dissolve it. You, you've set in motion, as did the city of Barry, to move to withdraw. You owe it to the voters to allow them the opportunity to weigh in on that. To dissolve the authority prior to the time of the voters would be a disservice. It would be a slap in the face to the voter's prerogative. It would be unethical, but that's par for the course. The State House restroom bill that was introduced today, or wasn't introduced today, it was discussed in committee today, H thirty-four. Your prior colleague Connor Casey has offered a bill to further drag out public restrooms for another year and a half with a study done contracted for this fall with a report back next in 2024. And it's just, it's unconscionable that we've got Trent Restrooms, public restroom paid for by public dollars in the transit center and in the city hall, and you're not allowing people to use it. It's a simple question of staffing, cleaning and supervision. We've got police right across the parking lot to supervise city hall bathrooms being open. There's no excuse for it. It's disingenuous, feet dragging, and it's a denial of courtesy to the old people, the young people, the unhoused and the tourists. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wish, yes?
I'm hoping this is the right public place to speak. I just wanted to stop today. Tina Muncie, and I live in Montpelier. And I came tonight to tell you how disappointed I am in the city manager, the prior mayor and the city council. Because my understanding is you're going to present a budget to the people of Montpelier. That's a seven point five percent increase from last year. I wish to speak for people my age who will now be paying a monthly pay equal, for their taxes, equal to what they paid for a mortgage payment when they bought their houses. Now, let me be quick to say, I'm one of the privileged few with a house. So there are a lot of people in Montpelier who can't afford a house, not only because of the price of the houses, but because of their taxes. So one might ask, what do I get for my taxes? Well, I don't get my garbage picked up. I don't get smooth streets. And I do on a regular basis get water pipes that break, flood the streets so people can't have water. So, oh, oh, yes. And then there was the state that suggested to the city of Montpelier that the pressure was too high and that they needed to consider that. My understanding is the city manager, even though I would say he's been here longer than any of you and he probably knew about the problems with the water system, has not taken that, is not addressing that, or has not agreed with the state. And I will also say you as a city council recommended that the people of Montpelier buy a large piece of land in the last budget. Interesting, but to me amusing, in that that piece of land will need to have significant infrastructure, no matter what you do with it. You already own a lot of land in which the infrastructure is not well cared for. So I'm going to end tonight where I began to say, I'm really disappointed because I believe this people of Montpelier vote yes every year for the city budget because they trust the people they've elected to do what's best for the city. And I'm sorry, the evidence is coming in that you're not doing what's best for the city. So I'm disappointed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina. Anybody else in the room wants to address the council? And I am not seeing any hands raised online. If, if you're online and you want to be heard, please speak up or wave or something so we can see. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So. Yes.
Just, I'm leaving because the budget process, budget hearing, it's already been cast like last year. There's not, it's not worth participating in a charade that you really want input on the budget.
Next. Next up, we have the consent agenda.
Oh, yes, go ahead. Not to his point, but to Tina's point. I'm not going to address, thanks for your comments, Tina. I just wanted to be clear, you mentioned the water pressure issue. And I would, without getting into a long thing, I'd say there's a whole lot of misinformation that went out about that. And we certainly do have high water pressure. We do disagree with the conclusion of the state. And at the state's request, we recently conducted an independent study of our system, will be releasing that shortly. But basically, the conclusion was water pressure is not the issue. The city should continue to replace lines as they are able to financially. So I would take issue that we have ignored a problem. We've actually had a system in place where we've been systematically upgrading lines within the authority. I'd also point out that councils and managers before I was here had been discussing this issue. And they, they made what I believe is the correct decision to go forward with water treatment plan. If we don't have clean water, it doesn't matter if the lines are breaking, people were getting diseases from our, our water. And that has sucked up about five to $600,000 a year in debt payments, which is shortly coming to an end, which can then be reinvested in more aggressive upgrading of lines. So I think, you know, the city made the correct decision to put in a water treatment plant. We've been trying to fix lines as we've been financially able to. We've developed a long-term plan. We recently, as recently as 2015, did a study of all of our water systems so we'd know how to prioritize. And as I said, we just did another one. So appreciate the concern, none of us like the water breaks, including our own staff. Nobody likes having water being out, it's a huge problem. But I want you to be sure that we have in fact been on top of it, aware of it. And we do professionally disagree with the state about pressure issues.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Somebody want to?
I move the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is passed. Next item on the agenda is the keep up here, is the first public hearing on the budget. So I'm going to do.
Okay, thank you. So we have a couple of comments already about the budget and the process. So I want to be clear about what has happened and what has not happened. City staff presented the budget, which followed the preliminary guidelines, counsel to stay within the rate of inflation. And that budget was presented in December, the council held a couple of meetings, made minor adjustments to it. And are now, and adopted as the preliminary budget.
Bill, I just, I see a comment that the online people might not be able to hear us.
I can't even hear you.
Okay.
Mics are lower than usual. They're working on it.
How are we doing? Is that better? Okay. I'll just sort of lean here. Okay, so here we, this is the first public hearing on the budget. I'll just repeat what I just said. This, the city staff, through me, through the city manager, presented a budget to the city council in December. In the council's preliminary guidance had been to stay within the inflation rate, which at the time was, well, it was seven point five percent at the time that we were preparing the budget. It actually dropped to seven point one percent when, the day actually that we presented the budget. So the city council held two meetings, made some minor adjustments to the budget and voted to bring it to public hearing. So they will have a public hearing tonight, public hearing in two weeks. And after that, we'll make a final vote on what does and doesn't go to the budget, to the, to the voters to consider. So earlier comments about, you know, I, I, I don't know what the city council is going to do, but certainly the whole purpose of the public hearing is to hear from people, their suggestions, of what they would like to see added or removed from the budget. So that's what we're here to do. So our budget goals, when we prepare the budget every year, we have some things we try to do. So the city council adopts a strategic plan, sets priorities for the community and in different policy areas. So obviously, the biggest tool to implement the strategic plan is through the annual budget. Part of that is to retain and stabilize our staffing levels. Over the last couple of years, we've seen unprecedented vacancies in our city positions. We can't deliver our core services. Someone just referenced, what do I get for my taxes? And a lot of that is services that are delivered by individuals and we have not been able to deliver them as consistently as we would like. So part of our goal is to have full staffing levels. To continue our investment in infrastructure, we certainly did fall behind on road paving during the pandemic years due to revenue shortfalls. Last, this past year, we've made a significant catch up and we hope to continue to do that in the next couple of years. To deliver responsible services, people need police, fire, public works, road plowing, all the recreation, senior, all the things that we provide. And finally, to stay within the, the rage of, the range of the inflation rate, which again in November was seven point one percent. There we go. So looking at our strategic goals, number one, well, they're not in any particular order. Improved community prosperity is one of those goals. So we earmarked $100,000 for economic development. That was our pre-pandemic amount. And the idea is to divert that funding for the next couple of years to the Country Club Road Project so that we don't have to increase budget funds for that. We've retained $45,000 for the homelessness task force. That is primarily for outreach services. But clearly, this is a growing need in our community. And I think we will see even a greater need at the end of March, once the hotel program ends. Our community fund, which funds our nonprofits primarily, it's been held steady at 134,150. I think they're about to start their process of awarding those grants. We've kept 32,600 for Montpelier Alive and $10,000 for the Public Arts Fund. Oops, I went backwards. Here we go. Another goal is to provide responsible and engaged government. So we've talked about upgrading the infrastructure. As you can see, our mics and things don't always work as well as we would like. We'd like to, and our visuals aren't great. So we're hoping to improve the experience in this room for people attending and for people participating. We are continuing to work on our ADA, Americans with Disability Act transition plan. We are required by the federal government to eventually transition all of our facilities to be fully accessible, which we would like to do anyway. Our big project this year is upgrading the elevator in the city hall, which has been problematic. I mentioned earlier, fully staffed city departments. We have a, to meet the increasing demand for public communications, we have a part-time communications coordinator now, which we will expand full-time. We will continue the community stipend problem, program. Last year was started and I think it needs probably another full year to see its effectiveness. This was intended to provide stipends for people participating. This was intended to provide stipends for people participating on committees for whom it was an economic hardship. Perhaps they need a babysitter, perhaps they need to eat, those kinds of things. The Social Economic Justice Advisory Committee was retained for $10,000. And again, we've retained $15,000 for legislative advocacy, which is essentially hiring a professional advocacy firm to represent the city's interests on a daily basis at the state house in addition to our own city officials. This will be the third year that we've done that. Create more housing, which is one of probably the two biggest needs in the city, along with infrastructure. So we recommending level, fully funding the Housing Trust Fund at 110,000, but also allocating that fund for the Country Club Road project. So along with the 100,000 in economic development and an additional 40,000 that we have in the budget, that would be 250,000 this year for the planning work. We can talk more about that later. The Housing Committee may have some feelings about that. They did let us know about that, but that was the staff recommendation to the council. Practice good environmental stewardship. We are looking at our first truck purchase for DPW, pickup truck, of course. Electric mowers are, we are working to convert the entire DPW complex to renewable energy, which includes reworking some of the bond language from last year. We will be completing our capital needs assessment and sustainability, basically giving us the roadmap for all of our facilities that need to be upgraded and, and also brought to code for ADA. We're continuing to fund My Ride for $40,000 to give people an alternative transportation to driving. Confluence Park has been a project. There's some question whether we will proceed with this. So we're reworking the bond language to give the council more options. And there'll be a discussion, I believe, in February with the updated plan and perhaps a decision on what we're going to do then. And finally, actually, we won't be having a charter change, but we are proposing a stormwater utility. And that ordinance and proposal will be coming to the council in a more full fashion this spring. And that will allow us to address stormwater issues throughout the community. So to build and maintain our sustainable infrastructure, we maintained our funding at 2.149 million in our capital improvement and equipment plan. The good news is that's the same funding as last year. The bad news is we really want to be at our goal of 2.5 million, where we were pre-pandemic. So that is something we will continually be looking at, particularly for next year. However, that's bolstered by 2.2 million in ARPA funding, 1.1 million of which basically funded projects that had been cut due to pandemic shortages. And we'll talk about the, the next 1.1 million in a bit. The rec center, of course, we have a huge investment, a huge liability on Berry Street with our rec center, needing six to eight million just to rehab it in place. And so we are hoping to invest in a future rec facility at the Country Club Road site and then consider what reuse for the rec center would happen. Putting $7.2 million into East State Street. Some of that is grant funding that would, that will completely redo the street, all the subsurface water sewer, stormwater infrastructure, rebuild the roads at base, new sidewalks, new street, I mean, completely rebuild street. When it is completed, including a new CSO outflow, again, to reduce our sewage overflows in storm conditions. We approved last year, the 550, these were all approved last year, but they're still projects to be done. So when we talk about investing in infrastructure, this is work to be done. The Berry Main Intersection is still waiting for its streetlight and improvements. We can't really proceed on that until the railroad does some improvements. It's, it's going to be going right through there. So we are waiting for them to complete this project. And upgrading our streetlights, our downtown's already been upgraded to LEDs and we are going to be completing that project throughout the year for the rest of the community. So we will be getting better light and saving energy. Improving public health and safety, continuing purchasing body worn cameras for our police department. That's been a very successful project. And we've been continuing that. We will be investing in a policy software platform. I'm sure the chief could speak more about that, but allowing the police to function more efficiently. We have implemented a grant-supported K-9 unit, fully deployed with grant funds. So the Atlas is on the job now. And we are completing implementation of the Crisis Intervention Team Program, which is a big innovation for us to be able to deal with people in mental health crisis or any kind of crisis for that matter. Again, Chief Nordson can speak to that more fully. So taking a look at our capital equipment plan, if you look at where it says total budget, you can see that the total is the same. That's the good news. As I said, the bad news is that we are not up to the 2.4, 2.5 million where we'd like to be. More bad news is because of the implementation of the debt of some of those projects, we have less annual money this year to work with. So we will not have as much money for new projects this year. However, given the backlog of big projects that we have, there will still be a fair amount, quite a bit of infrastructure work being done. So we've got some street paving money in. We're going to replace a bridge. We've got some transportation project sidewalks. I'm just highlighting what people can see here. Again, we have DPW here. We'd be happy to go into more of these in detail if needed. And then equipment, we, again, looking primarily at DPW equipment, new police cruiser, which is an annual cycle. It's not a new additional cruiser. Those are the main equipment purchases. And then our ARPA funding. So taking a look at the 1.2 funding that we had left over, well, excuse me, at the 2.2 that has been, we were awarded. We can go through, you can see here where we did, put 620,000 to delayed roads and bridges and retaining walls, another 420,000 to deferred equipment purchases. So that was done with the first batch. The second batch has been allocated, well, actually was done last year for the Housing Trust Fund to restore its funding to implement our community outreach program. So that included the public survey that we did this year, our part-time communications program. We've allocated 425,000 for vulnerable populations, public restrooms, and another needs, we're waiting to study to recommend what we do with that. We'll be implementing an electric vehicle charging station, possibly the Public Works Department for vehicles or available to the public as we wait for public works vehicles. We put 400, we've talked a little bit about water and sewer lines. We put $450,000 of that into water and sewer infrastructure. We already spent about 325,000 of that. And then we allocated last year, our funds to the Berry Recovery Residents for Moms and Kids. That's a one-time expense. And then we're allocating 70,000 or proposing to allocate $70,000 for connection incentives for new users for district heat, because that is also supporting renewable energy. So that's kind of the accounting of our ARPA funds, both used and proposed. I'm not going to go into this in detail. These are all available online, but we did two surveys this year. One, a very complete survey, the complete citizen survey. That was a professionally done, statistically significant survey, gave us a lot of information. And then we also did a much more informal survey about the budget in advance. We may do another one now that we've released the budget, just to get a sense of, well, obviously, the most important survey of all will be conducted on March 7th and, and then before. But basically trying to get some sense. And again, I think unsurprisingly, the top issues that people identified in both surveys were, you know, infrastructure, public safety and housing. And so we've tried to allocate our resources in those areas. And again, these are available. So the property tax rate, as the budget stood coming into these hearings, we, we did add, so that's council's direction, we added $8,000 for Wrightsville Beach and $5,000 for the Parks Commission. Those have been put in. However, we were able to make some other adjustments to not change the tax, proposed tax rate. So we figured you'd appreciate that. And so we are currently at a 9.3 or 7.4% increase, which is where it was when it was first proposed to the council. And obviously, you will have two conversations with yourselves and the public to figure out where you want to go from there. This is just a quick history, looking at water and sewer rates. The, the longstanding policy of water and sewer rates, again, to address backlogged infrastructure, was to rate, adjust rates by inflation plus 1%, additional 1% putting into, and possibly more, but at least the additional 1% going into fixing old water lines, sewer lines. So the next steps and questions, and next steps in the process, we have public hearings tonight. Another public hearing currently scheduled for Thursday, the 26th. That is the last night the council has to adopt anything they do that night, has to be voted, and that's what goes on the budget. We will have an interactive spreadsheet on the website, and I think Kelly will have it up tonight so that people can go in and add, subtract, multiply and divide, but add, add items, take items out and see what that effect has on the tax rate. So they can understand what that means to remove something or to put something in. And so we hope people will take advantage of that and the council will take advantage of that. All budget documents are up on the website. And including these overviews, there, the, there was an overview article in the December Bridge, the second, December 21st Bridge with the summary of the budget proposal. There will be another one in the February Bridge, just in advance of the, of the budget vote along with, along with the annual report, which comes out. So a lot of chances to get yourself informed voting, but certainly in terms of the public process, it's now and in two weeks. So that's all I have in the overview. I'm happy to answer any questions while I'm here. If you want to go back to slides, otherwise I'll go back to my seat and can answer questions. And we do have most, if not all, of the key department heads here can answer any specific questions. Oh, I forgot one last thing for the council and the public. We've had, each department did their own individual budget presentation. It's all recorded. They are on YouTube and on the city's Facebook and I think our website. So anybody who wishes to see an individual department presentation, those are all available to the public as well. And the council was able to view those so that they could do that with more time instead of trying to cram it all into one or two meetings. So that is another tool that's available for people who wish to get informed about the budget. Okay, thanks, Bill. Any questions from the council at this point? Okay, thanks. At this point, we will open the first public hearing. And this is our time to hear from residents about them. Any questions you might have or any comments you might have about the budget? And I will start by taking comments from people who are in the room. Anyone who wants to be heard, please just either, please just step up and line up at the microphone. You can be recognized. Yeah.
Good evening, Dan Jones. I am curious, just looking at the, a few things, like, first of all, is there a paper copy of this rather than the website that one could read for going to sleep at night if possible? I, I tend to be slow in my, I'm not enjoying the screen time any longer, but
I think we can have one available. I don't know if there is one, but we can, isn't one of the binders there, right on the table?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have some.
I can live without that. I'm more, I'm more looking about the infrastructure. In terms of the 450,000 for water and sewer maintenance, that is out of the city, not out of the water and sewer fund, is that correct?
No, so that was ARPA funds.
Those are ARPA funds.
Right, so that was above and beyond what we would normally do out of the water and sewer funds.
Okay. As a point of curiosity, what has been sort of the average in the last couple of years for the total expenses for the city for the repairs to water and sewer from the various main breaks, et cetera? Do we have an idea for that?
We probably do. Do you have any? Kurt, do you have a thought on that? I think there's only one functioning mic, so.
We can share it, right?
You think that one's working now? That one is.
This one.
Okay. You think it is working now? I should give it a try.
I'm Kurt Monica, Public Works Director. So the question about average annual cost for maintenance or repairs of the water system. So it does fluctuate a lot depending on the, the season, particularly. So, yeah, I mean, last, last year was a high one and I'd say it was close to $50,000. And on average, I would estimate around 20,000 is probably a rough estimate of average annual. No, no, 50,000 was the contracted cost last year.
Yeah, well, oh, we don't, so we don't, we don't figure our, our own workers in on that.
Oh, yeah, the, our own staff is, you know, I'd say average of 20,000 a year. We typically do most repairs in-house. And it's just last year, there was a, a high number of leaks, so we couldn't keep up. So we had to contract an additional 50.
And, and how much have we done? So, so I don't know if that's exactly what Dan asked, but in addition to repairs, how much have we done in replace, you know, new replacement? Because the 450 is for new replacement of lines, not repairing.
That's right. Yeah. So the 450, the reference for ARPA funding, that was a replacement line on Town Hill Road and, and the school street project that we just completed.
Okay, I, I know it was 200,000 or something for the school street. Does this include anything of this new connection that we're, I'm not quite sure what the cost is up to Murray Hill?
No, that was separate from the Murray Hill construction cost.
Okay, so there was no detailing on that. So I was curious what, what we're, what we're looking at as that as a liability.
I'd have to look back to get the exact number on the Murray Hill connection. So the, the city, it was a shared expense with the Murray Hill Homeowners Association. The city's responsibility was to extend the municipal system from Town Street out to the end of North College. That was what the city installed. And then from there, the Murray Hill Homeowners Association was responsible for the costs through the field up to City Side Drive where their existing system was.
Okay, I'm just, just trying to get a sense. So that's why I wanted a sort of a paper copy of the budget to sort of look at the, the absolute things. Because I am still curious, I, you know, rather than the, you know, and I guess I'm trying to ask this, in terms of what percentage of the time is spent, if you will, within public works on the repairs and stuff? Because I, I keep seeing these things of, you know, work crews there for a few days, where every time there's a main bus. So I'm sure that, that, you know, 20,000 sounds like an awfully low number for that kind of work. Am I, am I missing something here? Or we just don't count that way there?
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, this, like I said, the number fluctuates a lot. I, I don't have the exact detail. I could certainly can get that and send it to you. We could pull it up from records.
If you could, please, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. So anybody else in the room who wants to address the council at this point? Yeah, Tina.
Sorry, Tina Muncy again from Montpelier. I have a question. Could you clarify the Confluence Park money? Now, I appreciate it's not in this budget, right? It was what we voted for with the, it was in the part with the State Street redoing. And what I'm curious about is my understanding is, in order to do what we thought we'd have to do, it's going to cost twice as much or more than that. So if we're not going to do it, you did say more flexible wording. What does that mean? Does that mean if you're not going to do something, it just goes into the general fund?
So that's a great question. So I will try to make it clear. Thank you. So, right, so Confluence Park, so there were, it actually wasn't part of the East State Street bond, but there was a separate bond last year for 1.8 million. That included Confluence Park. I think it included Pellet Stove at the, at the DPW garage, included the Berry Main Intersection and the streetlights, maybe one other project, there's a group of projects. So 600,000 was tentatively allocated for Confluence Park, which at the time was estimated to be about 1.1, 1.2 million total cost. So there were grant funds to cover the rest of it. So you're right, we've now heard that the cost of the project could be as high as $3 million. And I, I, you know, so the council hasn't seen the final presentation of the final numbers. So we're not in a position, well, they're not in a position to make a decision yet, but clearly the, the finances have changed. So there'll be an article in this year's, so we haven't issued the bond yet. We don't have the money in hand. So we haven't issued the bond yet. We don't have the money in hand. So, so we there'll be an article on the ballot this year to amend last year's bond amount. I mean, it won't change the dollar amount, but to change the potential uses to allow the council to either not issue the money at all, just save the 600,000 or to reallocate it to some of these other infrastructure projects that we need. So if, if they choose not to do the Confluence Park, that they could put it toward one of these other things and it would still be warranted to the items that are listed there.
But you wouldn't give it back to the people.
Well, you could. I mean, that would be a choice of the council. They would, one choice. So the, the people haven't spent it yet. So it has, the bond hasn't been issued. So in theory, the council could have only issued 1.2 million instead of 1.8 million is what you're saying. And that's very much clearly a possibility.
The reason I ask that is I think you've said we're about at our debt level. The bonding is about as far as we can go.
Well, so I also want to clarify that because you're, you're correct, sort of. So we, no, I mean, you are, I mean, for, you know, you're doing great. We have, we have a debt policy, a city, our own imposed debt policy that we are at that. That our actual legal debt limit, we're well below. So, so it's just, I want to make clear there's two to the grant. We're not bumping up against any legal debt ceiling. It's our own limits that we put on us for good financial practice. So yes, we're bumping up against that and that's one reason why there's no new bonds proposed this year because you know, we've got to manage what we've done. We took, we've made some big steps last year and we've got to play those out for a bit. So, yes. Sorry if I was garbled in my answers.
Thanks, Tina. Is there anyone else in the room? And then we'll get to the people who are online. Okay. First up online, we have Carolyn Ridpath.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Ridpath and I'm a resident of both Montpelier and a member of the homelessness task force. I am here to ask the city council to restore the funding for an embedded social worker in the police department. At the last homelessness task force meeting, it was voted to ask the city council to reinstate funding for this position and I am here to advocate for that. First I'll give a little history, then I'll describe the current funding package. Chief Backos, I'm not sure I pronounce these names properly, of the Montpelier Police Department and Chief Bombardier of the Berry City Police Department had talked about a shared position for a mental health clinician for many years. They needed to find funding and that was secured in both cities in late spring of 2020. The Department of Mental Health provided additional funds and Washington County Mental Health Services agreed to act as the employer. In August 2020, Susan Lemire was hired and she stayed in the position until August 2022, when she moved out of state. The intention was to have a trained social worker assist police in working with difficult situations. By all accounts, the collaboration between both police departments, Washington County Mental Health and the Department of Mental Health have been deemed a success. Currently, Washington County Mental Health Services is attempting to hire for the position of shared embedded social worker. The position is shared equally between Berry and Montpelier. The funding consists of 20,000 from Berry, 20,000 from Montpelier and 40,000 from the Department of Mental Health. Currently, there is funding through June 30th, 2023. If no funding is available for fiscal year, June 30th, 2024, then anybody hired in this fiscal year will need to be terminated as of June 30th, at least by Montpelier. Restoring funding at that point would be difficult. As a result, I am requesting that the $20,000 be restored to the budget for an embedded social worker.
Thanks, Carolyn. I thought that history was very helpful. Chief, do you have anything you want to comment to that? I know you talked about this last time.
All very valid points and I worked hand in hand with Susan for two years, so I would certainly welcome to have the $20,000 for Susan. This is not a, or for any embedded social worker. We have not been able to fill the position. So it was a, it was a difficult spot for us to be in and we had a lot of hard choices and if I delivered everything that I asked for, Tina would be, would be here hollering at me. So, you know, so yeah, so I really, I appreciate that. And I think you probably appreciate the difficult spot that we were all in too. So if you all want to give me the $20,000, I will happily take it and I will continue, I will continue to work to try and fill that spot. But as of this day, I still haven't been able to fill that spot.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up online, we have Linda Berger.
Hi, thank you. I have a really simple question. I can't, Bill, I can't find your slide presentation. Can you give me how to find it on the website? I'm really sorry.
I'm not sure I can do that from sitting here at my desk, but we'll see if we can figure it out. If not, we'll send it to you and make sure it's posted.
Thank you.
It'll be on tomorrow, right?
Yeah, but should have been on from last time too.
Thank you.
If it's not, I'm sorry, we'll get it, make sure it's up.
Next up, DeeDee Brush.
Hi, thank you. I'm DeeDee Brush. I live in Montpelier. And I do have a copy of the slide presentation that Bill, I did find it somehow on the web. And I just have a few notes on here that, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to go from the, the first slide and move back. I, I don't have that many questions, but one thing, and I mentioned this the other day to Jack. Under the heading of provide responsible, engaged government. I would strongly urge the, each member of the council to do more in terms of meeting with constituents in your, in your districts. Either at people's homes or at a restaurant downtown, whatever, or even in, in city hall to give people a chance to actually have, get to know you, for one thing, you get to know us a little better because I think either, you know, when you're sitting in the back of the room at a city council meeting, it's hardly a venue to know one another very well. And it's also very difficult to actually have a relaxed conversation. So I think that would be a huge plus. I also wanted to ask about the committee stipend program. I, I remember last year when this was discussed. There was a question, and maybe I posed it, I can't even remember, as to how you are going to measure its success. And I want to know what, what has happened with that? So that's one question.
We, does someone have the data about use? We can get the data on use. There are a few people using it. I don't think it's being fully utilized, but there are a handful of people for whom it's meeting a need. We'll get you the data for the next meeting and before.
So my question is if it's only a few people and I, was it instituted last July? Is that when it started?
Correct.
So if there are only a few people, why is there another $20,000 in the budget for this coming year? I mean, that seems to be a poor choice of $20,000 if, if it's underutilized. So that's one thought.
So DeeDee, I, I would say simply that from the staff perspective, at least, you know, sometimes programs take a while and, you know, they get slow start. So if the council had established a limit of $20,000 for the program, we felt it needed a full year to run before it could really be evaluated. But if it started July 1st and it was only, you know, we were doing the budget in November, December, it hadn't had a long time to run by the time we were proposing that. So.
So maybe the 20,000 that was last year, if that was the number, maybe you don't need an additional 20 this year. I'm just saying that you must not have, you must not.
That's a fair argument. I just wanted to explain how we ended up with it.
Okay. So I, I think you could at least look at that figure and, and just question whether you need to put the same amount back in this year. On the Practice Good Environmental Stewardship page, there's something here that says rework bond language under the net zero DPW complex. Could you elaborate what you mean by rework the bond language? What way are you working it?
I sure can. It actually goes straight to the question that Tina Muncy just asked about reworking the bond language. One idea which has not been approved or thought of by anyone was if we did not use the $600,000 for the Confluence Park, we could use some portion of that to complete the whole, convert the whole DPW to renewable energy.
Okay.
Might not need the whole amount and then we wouldn't have to come back for future funding. And that would be completely done at once because there's 250,000 in there for that now, but that doesn't do the whole job.
I see. I'm sorry. I forgot that that was part of the, that part of that bond issue.
Right.
Okay. And then one thing, you know, there has been an awful lot of discussion over the years and I think that you heard a little bit about it yet again tonight about the idea of a public restroom. Perhaps, can, can the 600,000 be used for anything other than? Could it be used, for instance, if you wanted to build public restrooms? Could you allocate it for something different like that? Or does it have to be?
Well, the, the, the language isn't final. It won't be final till the next meeting when we, so I'd have to look at what the current draft says, but it's, that could be added. It's also possible that could be part of the 425,000 that, that was been set aside in ARPA. And, and as mentioned earlier, we've also been working with the state. The, the comment was correct that the bill as it sits today calls for study with possible construction next year. But they're also taking testimony on that bill tomorrow and I'm going to urge them that they advance that project much quicker than what is currently listed in the bill, whether that happens or not. So it's, you know, the reason we're asking the state just is that obviously a public restroom is for lots of people, including visitors to our capital city as well as those that are unhoused. And as we know, the, the Capitol, the state building is one of the most visited locations in all of Vermont. And so we have a lot of visitors that come to our city that need public restrooms and we think the state would be a great partner for that since they're a big draw. And they are also, you know, in the mix on the homeless issue as well, how they handle it. So I'd like to see them be part of the solution.
Okay, I just have a couple other points and then I'll, I'll move, I'll let you move on. Let's see, it is on, well, I think Tina brought it up, the whole notion, you, you would express great concern about how high the debt limit is. It's double what it was last year. And I think you said that that jeopardizes possible projects that the city can do in the future. Is the council discussing this? Are you doing something about this? I don't know the right way to ask.
Yeah, I, I know. And I'm trying to think of the, the right way to answer your question that's clear for people. So there's the debt limit, the overall debt limit, which is kind of the accumulation of all of our debt. Then we have a capital improvements plan. And again, trying to manage the budget, we try to set a target of how much money will go into that plan. And our ideal goal would be two and a half million dollars, 2.4 million, 2.5 million dollars. This year it's 2.15. When you have, so part of that is debt payments because that is, those are capital improvement projects. So when you deduct the debt from the total, what's left is what you have to spend any given year. So you're right. So last year we, we had a lot of projects. So we're projecting all of that debt to be fully funded this year. Some of it may not be, you know, as we mentioned, we haven't let the bond yet for 1.8 million. So, so those debt payments may go down and might free up some money for us this year, but we obviously plan for worst case scenario. But those are, those are policy decisions, not legal restrictions. So the council could increase the, the debt policy, they could increase the amount of funding going to capital. One of the reasons it's, hasn't been increased, at least in our presentation and, and when the capital, the council's Subcommittee on Capital Improvements was because of the overall level of the budget, you know, it was sort of a we're already at, you know, seven some odd percent. We don't really want to add $200,000 more to it. Now they may change their mind in the next two weeks, but that's where we were at in December.
Okay. And then finally, oh, is Grouse Road a city road, by the way?
Yes.
It is a city road. Okay. And you may have answered this early, early on before I hopped onto Zoom. So forgive me if you've already, you don't have to answer the question if you've already done it. Cause I can listen to the recording. On the street paving, last year you requested eight, it was requested for 875 and yet it's going to be 118,500. Why?
Well, so a lot of it has to do with the issue we just talked about was, you know, because some of the debt payments are meeting into the available funds. But also we, we supplemented a lot of our work last year and this year with ARPA. There'll still be a lot of roadwork, including the 7.2 million dollars on East State Street. The state is also paving all of Route 2 from the Crumie Stand to, you know, the East Montpelier Line to the Berlin Line, excuse me, the wayside. That's be a huge paving improvement that doesn't come out of the city's budget, but it will still be a huge infrastructure improvement in our community. So we have a lot of paving work. This year we did over a million dollars worth of work. There will be other projects that will include paving in it. We wish there was more money in there, honestly, but again, we're just trying to balance. But yes. It's a good question.
And finally, on the survey, you mentioned that the survey, you hired professionals to do the survey. Do you recall what the cost was for those surveys?
So there were two surveys. One was the, the American Citizen Survey done by Polco. That was about $18,000. And there's, we got a, there's a long survey, a lot of demographic breakout. The, a part of the subscription with Polco for doing the big surveys, we then get a survey tool that we can use anytime we want. And so we did a very short, brief, and that's, you know, part of that cost. So we can do regular surveying throughout the year. I think we're going to be doing some of that with the Country Club Road project and others. So we put out a very short, you know, few questions about the budget and we got 200 and some odd responses back on that.
And most, most of the responses were, as you pointed out, the, the four areas that people were most concerned with, but they all, almost everybody said they did not want taxes to increase. Yet we have a 7.4 increase in the taxes, tax rate. Excuse me, in the, in the budget.
Thanks, DeeDee. I see you're above the two minute limit.
All done. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, DeeDee. Next up, we have Dan Toll. You're not quite unmuted yet. Now you should be.
Thanks, Jack. Once again, I, I want to first make it clear that tonight I'm wearing two hats.
Introduce yourself.
Sorry. You think I'd know how to do this by now, Jack. Dan Toll, I'm a resident of Montpelier. I live on my first avenue and tonight I want, again, I want to make it clear that I'm wearing two hats, my residential, being a resident of Montpelier hat and the hat of being part of the Montpelier Police Review Committee and not the consulting work I'm doing on homelessness. I, I'm here to, to support Carolyn Ridpath's representation of the homeless task force recommendation around the issue that the so-called embedded social work issue. The first thing I wanted to mention as someone who does consulting in crisis response that it's, it's, it's better to use the term embedded crisis worker because there's two, two major categories of crisis workers. One is social worker slash clinician and the other is peer support workers. And I'm happy to talk about that, but I don't have time in the two minutes. You'll have a lot more time. Next, I just want to mention, I won't reiterate my impassioned response, my impassioned appeal that I made in December for the restoring this funding as being a potential life and death situation. However, I will put on a third hat as a former CFO in the private sector. I would urge you not to take this out completely. Would love to see it restored 100% at 20,000. But as a former financial officer, I know once a line item goes to zero, it often stays at zero and never comes back. So if you have to reduce it, I, I strongly recommend you reduce it, but not take it out completely. The, the other major point I wanted to make is, as I think many of you know by now, my proclivity is not throwing stones, but to try to throw ideas and solutions. Last time I offered to brainstorm with, with Chief of Police around the funding issue and he and I have been working on connecting around that. But since that meeting, it seemed to me that threshold issue was, and it came up again tonight, the recruitment issue. And just very quickly, I wanted to offer some ideas around recruitment as I've been thinking about this. Number one. Number one, I sit on the Mental Health Integration Council, specifically on the Workforce Development subgroup, chaired by Allison Kromf, who's the Deputy Director of DMH. With the council's permission, I'd be happy to reach out to Allison and explore ideas for recruitment for this position. Secondly, I'm co-chair of something called the Peer Workforce Development Initiative, which is specifically about developing the peer support workforce, including peer support crisis workers. And again, with permission, I'd be happy to talk to the committee about the recruitment piece. I did reach out to, to Eric, the chief. He and I traded phone calls, because I really wanted to chat with him beforehand about this, but that opportunity never arose. Oh, and the last thing, the CIT initiative, Bill mentioned that earlier as being, you know, one of the priorities in the budget. I am, I've been on that steering committee now for a year and a half, and one of the key components, or actually, one of the the core foundational elements of, of CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training, is collaboration and coordination among first responders all across Washington County. And an embedded crisis worker would be one of the key players in that. And so again, that initiative, which we have the, the chiefs of police and fire and substance use and mental health from here, from here, Barry Berlin, we have a big committee of people that are working really hard. And by, by withdrawing the funding, that would have a negative impact on that initiative. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Next, I see Carol Welch online.
Hi, I'm, I live in Montpelier, in, obviously, Montpelier, on Valerie Avenue. I, I got lost in the weeds of the budget workshops the other day online, and I noticed that there's, most of the staffing is pretty stable, a number of, of positions. But the city manager's office is, is gone up by two. And so I'm, first of all, would like to know what those two positions are. And then if there's an offset, are we increasing the number of staffing? In an absolute sense, or are people just being shuffled around? Anyway, that, that's just my question.
I could tell you the two positions. One was the sustainability and facilities position that was added to the budget last year. And the other was the reworking of the communications director from full-time, part-time to full-time. So those are both fully in the budget this year. Last year had been in portions. So they are fully new positions, but they were pre-existing that hadn't been partially funded before.
So that's, when I looked at the, the, the organization chart, those positions, or anyway, the, the sustainability position is not shown. But that's like out of the city manager's budget, or the city council's budget?
It's, it's in the city manager's budget, I believe. That's where that position is. I'm kind of looking at Kelly.
I know we, I know that that position got added fairly recently. And I was just wondering where it is falling on the organization chart and like who that person is reporting to.
I think we're getting an answer for you now.
Thank you.
Just being sure you can hear me okay. Kelly Murphy, Finance Director, Assistant City Manager. So yes, you're correct. On the organizational chart that sits in the city manager's office and is funded with general fund dollars.
And is that in the city manager's office? Because that position is not tied to any individual department, but provides sustainability services across the city government?
Yes. And actually, if you're looking at the line items themselves, it's not actually in the city manager's budget per se. It's actually in city hall's budget lines.
And it may, in the DPW in org charts, we've just corrected them and updated them, but for the one that went out in the budget, it might be on DPW.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it should be in any case in the city manager's office, but we'll verify.
But those, that would, to the extent there are two positions in the city manager's budget, that's what those are.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Okay, DeeDee, is your hand up again, or just not taken down? Okay, thanks. And I do not see anyone else online asking to be recognized. Oh, I see Carrie Brown, Counselor Brown has, has joined us. Because you're, because you're online, you should introduce yourself.
Thank you. Yes, hi, I'm Carrie Brown, counselor from District 3.
Thank you. And I want to make sure there's, to give a chance to anyone in the room who did not request to be recognized before and now would like to speak. Okay, with that, we will close. Oh, sorry, Dan. Yeah, keep it brief.
I noticed a passing, Dan Jones again, I noticed a passing reference to the district heat plant. What is the plan there? I, I personally have been very disappointed with the city's failed management of that. I just want to put that editorially out there. But what is, what is the current plans with the district heat plant? And the second question I have, so I'll make it quick, and is I was hearing that we seem to have within Public Works and Other Places, certain problem of staffing the departments. And I was walking past a sign in Burlington today about somebody at the Bagel Bakery offering $25 an hour, and that that may be some new benchmark in terms of what pay has to be because of inflation and the cost of living locally. So I was curious whether those are included in the budget. Are we just talking about what we have now, or are there, are we restaffing? What's, what's going on there is my, my first question then.
Great. So I, I will answer both those questions. I'm not doing anything with the district heat plant. What we've included was to, we want to, are proposing to use some ARPA funds to assist people with tying out. We have some interested new customers, which would help stabilize the system. And one of the, one of the obstacles has always been the cost of connection. So we're trying to figure out a way to help all, including the city users that are on the system now. So that's the district heat question. There's nothing happening with the plant. I think the second question is actually, I'm glad you asked it, because it really is the core of the whole budget proposal, which is funding for staff. So we did reach historic vacancies over this past year and a half. And a lot of it had to do with wages and other, so we had to make some pretty drastic changes over the course of the year to both DPW police, the prior year with fire, to make ourselves competitive with the private sector and with our fellow municipals. So we are now, I believe, almost fully staffed in DPW, but that is a recent phenomenon. We are getting close in police. We've still got a couple of vacancies left. But we were down five or six. So we're making progress, although some of them still need to go to the academy and will be sort of not able to be fully functional for us for six to eight months. But, so part of the 7% in the budget is just filling those positions and filling them at higher rates, trying to, to provide the services that we need, because our old rates weren't cutting it. So, yes, that was a very astute question, because it's, it's the, no, I, I mean, let's face it, we're a people-oriented business. I mean, yes, we pave roads, yes, we, you know, do a lot of things, but people hear me say this here and you're out. You know, it's people that take your dispatch calls, it's people that answer your fire calls, it's people that plow your roads, it's people that do the work, and people that assist here in City Hall, and they cost money. And when we can't, without people, we can't do what we do for the taxpayer. And we were, we had to reverse that trend. So yes, that's a, a big impact. So thank you for asking that.
Okay, just ending, along with that sort of the budget thing, is there a way of getting a little more detail on what's planned on the district heat system for me?
Sure. I mean, I, I
Being on the Energy Committee, we've been sort of talking about that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I mean, I don't know that there's a, any more plan than what I just told you at this point, but maybe, maybe we're, maybe we should talk separately. But yes, we're happy to provide whatever we can. Thanks, Dan. Anybody else who would like to address the council at this point, recognizing that we have another public hearing coming up in two weeks? Okay, I see nobody online. Oh, sorry, Dan. I wasn't sure.
I had, I had my hand up, but maybe you couldn't see it. I apologize.
I wasn't sure if it was a new hand raised.
Yeah, it is a new hand. Well, it's the same hand, but I put it up twice.
Well, will you try not to recognize people twice? I just did that with Dan, so try to be brief.
Oh, totally different topic. It's on the issue of housing and homelessness. I hope this isn't appropriate, but I just wanted to let everybody know that next Thursday at noon, for Homeless Awareness Day, there's going to be an event on City Hall steps, or excuse me, the State House, State House steps at noon. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. If you could email me that, I'd appreciate it. We were talking about it at, at work today, and it'd be good to be able to publicize that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, hearing no other people who are seeking to be recognized, I will close the public hearing. And so council, where are we? We have the opportunity to go forward as we are, or take any suggestions to either add or subtract from the, from the budget that we sent up last time? Lauren.
Thanks. I mean, I think to me, the one outstanding issue on my mind is the embedded social worker. If there is a way to get funding, I think even to Dan's point of getting it in here in an amount that keeps it as a clear priority of the city while acknowledging that the challenges we've had hiring it and you know, trying to work to make it happen. I mean, as Dan mentioned, it was, again, a huge priority of the Police Review Committee, and I by all accounts, it seemed really successful. So it seems unfortunate to just let it go and to I could see it becoming harder to bring back in the future when hiring might become easier if it's kind of abandoned altogether this year. So I'd be curious what other people's thoughts are.
Thank you. I agree. As somebody who does work with the Community Justice Center, I am working with people that probably could have used a person like that in their life before they committed crimes or whatnot. I feel like we should probably revisit that. I would, I would really hate to see that slip. It's, yeah.
Yep, I, I, I get that.
What does that make our percentage? 7.55?
Well, so you have your, you know, the council has options. You can increase the budget by 20,000. You can cut something else. You can, you can direct us to come back with a recommendation at the next, you know, you have some choices. But I think we'd really like to, you know, I think you need to give us some direction here. I don't know what the, what was that? 7.6.
Okay, I said 5.5, okay. I would support a motion. Put it back in.
So you're not making the motion, but you was
Like to make their own motions. I don't care.
Are you going to make that motion?
Sure, I would move that we add back in 20,000 for a embedded social worker at the police department.
I'll second it.
Okay, so is there discussion? Okay, Bill, Bill, one thing that I'm wondering is I, I got Dan's point about even not having a zero line would be, anything above zero would enable us to refund the, the, the position if, if the money became available. Does that literally mean that if we funded it at $1, that we could put the money, you know, in an organization this size? Is that something that would make a difference? Or, so I, I think I, I don't want to speak for Dan, but the way I understood his, his comment, which I, I get, is it's not so much what happens now. It's that when, once you zero something out, the next year when you're doing your budget, it's already at zero. So it's like, okay, well, you know, and next, you know, it just never comes back.
Status quo.
Right. And so I think his argument was even if you put, you know, $5,000 in, at least there's a budget line that you'll review next year. I think to answer your question, so that's a different question than you know, right, we could try to make it, you know, an adjustment. I, you know, and I want to reiterate what Chief Nordensen said. When we, when we did our budget deliberation, there wasn't a person in the room that didn't want a social worker. And I think, you know, had we, in all fairness, had we had someone in that position, we probably would have funded it and had to figure someplace else to take it. It was just, you know, you're making tough choices, trying to stay within an already high limit. And it seemed like one area, because, not only because it was vacant, because it had been vacant for so long. It seemed like it was almost impossible. So that's why we made the decision. I don't think we would object to the funding, and if you'd like us to take a look, we can. I don't have any, it's right off the top of my head where we get it, but we might be able to do something.
Done. Well, and along those lines, when we have money left from the prior year, it doesn't necessarily stay there. I mean, but could we attempt to keep the money we have left over in case we need more than 20?
Well, so so this particular program is funded, as was mentioned, accurately, 20,000 from us, 20,000 from Barry, and 40,000 from the state through Washington County Mental Health. So our contribution is pretty well set. You know, what happens with general fund money at the end of the year, you know, drops to the fund balance.
Yeah.
So, but then you could appropriate money out of the fund balance to spend, if that's what you chose to do. I don't, I think, you know, using the fund balance as a revenue, when you're setting your budget, you know, you're using one-time money to, for an operating expense, it's not good practice. It could be better if it's something we really want to do, and it's a priority, we should put it in the budget and figure out how we're going to fund it. And, you know, there's not a huge plethora of choices. We either add or cut somewhere else. So I'm, you know, those are that's what we need to do. Let's see, Carrie, Carrie, okay, good. I was looking for your hand.
Yeah, thank you. So my question is about, Bill, you said that 20,000 comes from us, 20 from Barry, and 40 from the state. And do we have any idea what's, what the status of those sources of funding are? And so if we don't put in our 20,000, is it gonna, is it gonna have any impact on that? If we do, can we, and we can find someone, can we count on the funding from Barry and from the state?
I am, see Chief Nordensen heading to a microphone.
Thank you. My understanding is, my understanding is that that money has been appropriated again through the legislature, and they put forth that bill. So
Do you know where Barry?
It should be there.
Do you know whether Barry has it in their budget?
Barry has it in that budget, yeah. We've been trying to find other ways to make a go of it. This would certainly make my life a lot easier.
Okay, are we? He's the new guy. Are we, are we ready to vote on this motion? All right, if so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, there you go. Anything else on the, on the budget? Anything else you want to either add or to cut or instruct the manager? Okay. Then we are set. And so that, now do you need a motion to have that be our budget? Or you just wait until the next? No, you, you've adopted a budget, now you just voted to amend it. And then that would be the budget going to the next hearing. And again, it's not, nothing's final until you vote what you put on the ballot. So obviously, you can change this or anything else at the next hearing. And, you know, we'll take a look, and if we have any ideas, we will certainly bring them in. We understand the challenge as well and where we're at, so. Okay, thanks. Now, I'm a little confused, because I think there may be a mismatch between what the printed agenda says and what the online agenda says. I think we're up next for the warning for the
I think we're up next for the warning, for the, for the first public hearing for the warning. Is that?
Annual meeting.
That's right. Okay, great. So item eight, first public hearing warning.
So obviously, this is the first public hearing on what would be on the ballot. And let me have this here. I'm not going to read it word for word, but I will summarize the warning. And then there are, you know, I think there are a couple of key issues that we should talk about. I mean, so the first, the first article one, you're going to be doing is to the one-year term for the mayor. Then the council district election, school district moderator, school district, you know, the, basically the first bunch of the elections. And article six, well, the article five is the withdrawal from the Public Safety Authority. Article six would be our budget. Article seven would be the school budget. Article eight would be the school's capital reserve fund. Article nine would be the mayor's pay. Article 10 would be the council members' pay. Article 11 is the school board pay. So these are all the annual budgets. And then article 12 would be the allowing the school board directors to use the fund balance again. So then article 13 is one I think we should talk about. This would be, shall the voters amend the authorization provided to the city council on March 1, 2022 to borrow the sum of money not to exceed 1.815 for highway recreation park and building infrastructure improvements? And then it would go on to say proceeds from bond funding may be used to finance the following amended improvements of various city infrastructure, heating system and energy improvement projects at the Public Works Garage, street light, traffic light and intersection improvements, a retaining wall on Marvin Street, Confluence River Park and other highway infrastructure projects. The estimated cost of the improvements is 1.815. So it just provides a little bit more flexibility, but it does still limit us to those, those topics. Now, we don't have to decide now how we would reallocate that. But that, that would be, that's the draft we have from our attorney. But it's also was intended to basically keep it within the, the family of items from last year. But just specifically thinking that if we didn't want to proceed with Confluence Park, and we don't know that yet, but if we didn't, then we would have the opportunity to look at that one.
And is the change, the use of the word may?
Yes. And, and also just, for example, it specifically called for a pellet boiler at Public Works in here. It talked about heating system and energy improvement projects because we think we will still do a pellet, but again, we haven't made a formal recommendation yet. But if this were to pass, I think we might suggest looking at just getting that Public Works project done. You know, all the things that Chris talked about, the floor heating and using the methane and really doing it right and, and having that completely onto renewable and using some of the six. So this just gives us that flexibility there. But otherwise, it's the same projects that we can achieve.
Okay, at this point, I will open the public hearing on this.
Excuse me, let me just finish though.
Oh, sorry.
Let me finish. And then article 14, right now is just a placeholder. We have not yet made a decision about whether to proceed with the local option sales tax. It's actually the next item on the agenda. And then article 15 is the annual special assessment for the designated downtown funds. And then the Calhoun Hubbard Library and the Central Front Home Health and House, which you already voted to put on the ballot. So that's it, the 17 articles.
Okay, now I will open the public hearing on the, on the warning for the annual meeting. Is there anyone up? Linda Berger.
Hi, thanks. I had a question. On the 2022 article 13, there was a lot of, at the end, there was a lot of information about the issuing of the term of 20 years. It's estimated to be approximately, so there's several sentences or one long sentence, which is not included in the current proposed article 13. So I'm wondering why all of that language from the previous bond was dropped?
Because, so great, great questions tonight. You've got an informed group of residents. I appreciate that. So the reason for that is that the bond was approved and authorized. So the voters have already authorized us to spend this money as per those terms. So what we're at, so if this article 13 as drafted were to be defeated, last year's article still is in effect. So this isn't revoting the bond, it's simply amending the allowed uses. So that's why. Great catch.
And is that it for you, Linda?
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm not trying to cut you off if you have more, but. Okay, I don't see anyone else online looking to comment or raise questions. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment or raise questions on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, where are we on this? Lauren?
One question for Bill. So we recently adopted a policy that made clear that any facilities improvements we're doing will be net zero or consistent with our net zero plan. Like, my only question would be, like, I would, I'd be inclined to say something like heating system and energy improvement projects at the Public Works Garage consistent with our net zero plan or something like that. But I think we just adopted something saying that all building projects will be. So I don't think we need to. I just want to be clear that that's the case because I just wouldn't want us to be like locking in something. We realize, oh, that actually would be a lot cheaper to.
Yeah, no, so, so that's fair. I think you could, we could probably put something where it says heating system, energy improvement projects, we could say net zero or renewable energy, something like that, you know. I think that would be perfectly fine. And just good point, the, the policy that was passed was that all buildings will be net 30 by, net zero by 2030. So this would, the biggest one to do is the whole Public Works facility. So if we can have an opportunity to get that all done, a long ways away, you know, this, we have three buildings here on District Heat already. The senior center is, uses a pellet boiler. We'll be building a new rec facility. I don't think we're going to probably redo the energy system for, for the old rec building unless it gets, you know, and that's a whole different story. So we'll, we'll have come a long way if we can toward that goal. Because obviously we already do the, the solar, whatever you call it, the exchange, solar exchange. So we're, we would be pretty far along.
Any other comments on this?
Would you got folks like to see draft language for the next meeting that says renewable or something like that? Sustainable or net zero?
It sounds like a good idea. Okay, so we don't have to approve this tonight. We can approve it.
As long as you're okay, you know, basically you're closing the first hearing and suggesting any changes you'd like to see. And then the next meeting, you'll, you will have to pass the final.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, we're on to item nine, consideration of proposed charter change. Bill, I think it's up to you again.
Sure.
And is this a, a public hearing too?
This is not a public hearing, although certainly our practice is to take public comment. In order to change the charter for anything, the city council has to vote to file language with the city clerk, the proposed amendment. And that has to be done 10 days prior to the public hearing. So the idea was if, if you vote, just doing this doesn't mean you're even agreeing to put it on the ballot. But if you don't do this, then this issue is over for this year. But if you vote to file the language, then at our next meeting, which is after 10 days, we would hold a public hearing and then you would decide whether or not to proceed putting it on the ballot. So this is a required step in, and then there has to be one public hearing, you know, 30 days, at least 30 days prior to the vote, and then another one within 10 days. So we would have another one at the end of, you know, February.
And so this, if we vote to file this language, then it would be on for public hearing at our meeting on the 26th.
Correct.
Okay. And this again is the proposal to add local option sales tax.
That's right. We currently have rooms, meals and alcohol, and this would include the sales, which I think 19 other communities have done in Vermont. And I think as, so as I would throw this out, that as you're having this conversation, some of the feedback we've received, and we haven't, we staff haven't really taken any kind of advocacy role or anything of this because we didn't, you know, till, till we know what the council wants to do. It is what, what would we use this for? So I don't know if you have to, you know, until maybe we would say, you know, 50% of it or some percent of it would go to road paving or some percentage of it would go to housing. You know, those kinds of things, or even maybe some small percent provides regular steady funding for Montpelier Alive. It'll help support businesses who feel like they've been, so. You know, something like that. If, you know, I think that would, if our goal is to have 900,000 or a million dollars a year in paving and we set 50 or 60% of this that has to go to that, then we know we'll have that, you know, it'll be based on that. I'm not, you know, and we'd be happy to come back with some specific recommendations if you'd like, or it's just a general revenue that could be used to offset our budget. You know, in theory, it could reduce property taxes or, you know, if you do everything from reducing property taxes by one and a half million dollars to adding one and a half million dollars of goods and services, that can otherwise not be afforded to pay. So it's how you choose to allocate that. But it may be that people, you know, again, I'd leave that to you or the elected folks. But some people like to know, what do you plan to do with it? So maybe by, if you choose to go ahead tonight and we have a public hearing, go collectively, make what I think.
Counsel.
If we designate it at this point and it continues and goes on the ballot designated specifically, then we have to go back to another charter change to undesignated?
Uh, depends how you, yeah, it depends what you put in the charter versus what you, you know, if you make a commitment that.
Okay, so it can be separate. You could not put it in the charter, but you couldn't make a.
Simply pass a council resolution that says this is what the use would be. And, and for example, I'm just making this up, but say you chose to put a bunch of money into paving and you really want that to go on, you know, because we need that. But then let's say we wanted to put another giant chunk of it into this country club road project. For, and you might say, you know, that will be revisited after four years or five years. You know, we're not going to do that perpetually, but that would be a, you know, way to raise $500,000 a year for that project on the property. So, you know, just one example of something you could do and set how long that policy is for. And again, of course, any council could change that too, but states intention.
Just like when we did with the other sales tax, room and board, I'd rather keep it separate. So the charter change is the actual option tax. And then within us, we may decide a policy of how to spend it and promote it as far as the item on the ballot, but I, I prefer to keep them separate.
Yeah, no, you don't have to put it in.
In general, what are your thoughts about, about going forward at all about whether we should do this?
We will discuss and vote. Closer. Is it better now? Okay. I'm laughing. So we will talk and discuss now and vote to take it to the public vote, the election, right? Okay.
So tonight you'd be voting to, to file language with the city clerk. If you do that, then at the next meeting, we would have a public hearing, we'd hear from the public, and then you would decide whether or not to put it on the ballot for the voters to vote. So this is a procedural step tonight, but obviously if you don't want to go ahead and spend any more time on it, you can end it now.
Thank you.
Carrie.
Thank you. I think I said this the last time we discussed it. I'm not in favor of sales taxes in general because they're extremely regressive and they're felt most profoundly by the people who can least afford them. And so I'm not in favor of advancing this. So that's where I am right now.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has an opinion? What, one of the, my feeling is that I, I agree with everything you said last week and tonight about the sales taxes, but it's also one of the few places, opportunities to look for expanding our revenue base with the, without raising property taxes. And that's something that, you know, we regularly hear people with concerns about their property taxes. And as I said last time, also, this is a way to generate some revenue from people who don't live in the city of Montpelier.
Well, I, I would like to at least put it forward so that it's on our discussion for the 26. So I'll make a motion that we advance it onto the ballot for discussion, further discussion in a public hearing.
The motion would be to file the language with the city clerk.
Okay. I couldn't get it to come up on my iPad. Sorry. I would have read your memo, word for word. So I move that we put the.
We file this.
File, file this language with the city clerk.
My second.
Any further discussion? Donna, sorry, Lauren.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of torn on this one. I mean, I'm going to vote to advance it because I think having the conversation and I'd be really interested in hearing from the community on it. I totally agree with Carrie. This is not my preferred way of taxing. I don't like the regressive nature of it. And, you know, we do have increasing needs and limited ways to raise revenue. I was looking up, because I know it came up last time on what's exempt from the sales tax. So I just pulled up from the Vermont government website and like clothing is exempt, food, food products and beverages. So not like prepared food at a restaurant, because that's already subject to the local options tax. But like your grocery shopping, the only thing that's taxable is soft drinks. But, but like accessories, clothing accessories and some hygiene products and stuff are subject to the sales tax. Medical equipment is not, menstrual care products are not, over the drug, over the counter drugs are not. But like sports equipment and other supplies like hot tubs and body massage appliances are taxable. So quite a very specific list. It's very interesting how these decisions must have been made through the years, what was and was not. It does give me some comfort that like the essentials in many cases are not subject to it. Some are, like, I think the hygiene products are essentials. So it's not across the board, but, you know, people buying food and drinks and clothes that would not fall under this. So that does give me some comfort. So again, I'll vote to advance it and really interested in the community response and discussion next week and kind of going into that open-minded.
Jen, is that where you are with that?
For looking that up because that's exactly what I was wondering, like, what is going to be taxed? So, thank you.
Carrie, do you have a response to that? Or should we, let's, I'd like to hear what people either in the room or online have to say about it, if there are any comments. Yeah, Tom.
Thank you. Thomas Moore, Prospect Street, Montpelier. Isn't another 1% sales tax? No, I'm just wondering, right now we already have a 1% sales tax. We've had it for a few years, right?
No, we have 1% rooms, meals and alcohol tax. We do not have a sales tax, local sales.
This tax we're talking, it's 1% more we want to do, right, or looking to do.
Some different.
It's different tax.
It's, it's on different items, Tom. It's the same level. It's 1%, but it's on different items.
Oh, a different.
This is general sales tax.
Increase.
Not from, no, not from the one we already have.
Okay, because I was going to say, you know, the, the cost of everything has gone up. You already got yourself a little bonus that $10 pizza now is $16. So you're getting 1% extra on that six bucks times 300 pizzas. So, I don't know, steak.
That was a great question, though.
No, it is a good question.
That was a good clarifying question. Thank you.
Yeah, cars, cars are not, cars are not part of this. No, but just for, to clarify for folks that are watching, the city does have a rooms, meals and alcohol tax. So folks that stay in lodging, pay a local 1%, supposed to eat out at a restaurant or have, you know, food and prepared food, a 1%, an additional 1% on top of the state's tax. And the same thing with. an additional 1% on top of the state's tax. And the same thing with alcohol served in a, an establishment, not what you buy at the store. Uh, so that, that the city already has that. It I think makes about $250,000 a year from that. Um, this is, you know, drastically different. This is local sales. This should probably be about 1.5 million per year in revenue. Um, interestingly, uh, it's the only way, not that this would be the reason to do it, but it's the only way that local governments can get any revenue from cannabis sales. The state took all the revenue for themselves, but they are subject to the local sales tax. So that would be it. And also now this includes, I think, Amazon sales and things like that, which in prior years had not, when we looked at this before. Um, the simplest way to answer the question though, for people that are concerned about this, we have a lot of questions. Does this include, does this include? And it only includes what is already subject to the state's sales tax. The city doesn't have the authority to tax new items or different items. We're not the people, you know, we had, I got some feedback about why, why doesn't this group professional services and those kinds of things? It's like the state has opted not to tax them. So the state tax department collects this for us. The city can't make its program up to be anything different than what the state's sales tax is now. So if you're paying sales tax, which is currently 6% on any item, you'd be paying 7% with one of it coming to this. Carrie.
Uh, Bill actually just answered the question I was going to ask. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion on, uh, on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed?
No.
So we, uh, I think that means we have to have a roll call. Brown or Earl. Morton. Cone.
Aye.
Bait.
Aye.
Brown.
No.
Okay. So the motion's passed and we will be filing that with the city clerk's office. Thank you. The next item is the, uh, special election for mayor. Um, so on this item, uh, as we discussed when we were choosing to appoint Councilmember Cone, the, the charter is very specific. It calls for an appointment of a, of a vacant position, but a special election for the mayor, um, and, and does not have an appointment option. Uh, so the city council decided informally that you would call the special election for the town meeting day. But again, we couldn't do this until there was actually a vacancy in the position and Mayor Watson resigned at the end of the last meeting. So this would be, you're formally, uh, calling your special, it's a simple act to say that. And, and, and Bill, I had one question about this and it's either related to this or related to the, to the warning. And that was that, uh, the, the draft warning that we, that you presented had, uh, Article one as to elect a mayor for a term of one year to complete the unexpired term. And I was wondering if that should be part of the warning for the city meeting, or whether it should be a separate warning because it has us called. So we, we ran that through the city clerk. He believed that, um, you know, we, we don't want to run two ballots and all that kind of thing. Um, so if there, if there's an adjustment to that wording, it will be on the warning. But, uh, his opinion was that it could still run as long as you've called it for valid item. And the example was, uh, in the years past, we've done special ballot items on other elections. Okay, thanks. Anything from the council?
So if I use the wording here on the, uh, format, Bill's going to be correct that we direct the city clerk to call a special meeting for the mayor on March 7th, 2023, in conjunction with the annual city meeting, including the same balloting and polling and balloting schedule.
Be correct. Did you just move that?
I, that's my motion.
And Counselor Earl seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we've adopted that. Yeah. So now we're to, I don't know how long that's going to be. Um, would you like to take our break now rather than waiting for eight there? Okay, we'll take a 10 minute break and then we'll return for other business council reports, the variety of things, and then a potential, uh, executive session. Yeah.
Item 11, the proposal for housing and conservation project on Gould Hill Road. And we'll move on to item 12, other business. Have any other business? Okay. Um, item 13, city council reports. Earl.
Um, I am officially announcing that I will not be running for reelection in March. I have decided to um, take a step back to focus on my family right now. Sorry, this is a little emotional because it was such an honor um, to be voted into this position and uh, to spend the time with all of you and learning how city politics work, how the city runs. Um, it's really been a gift, uh, but my family really needs my full attention, so. I am stepping down once my term is over and I look forward to seeing what y'all do in the next year. So, thank you.
Go.
Uh, I have two things. Okay, am I good?
Probably need to be right on top of it and louder.
More? Okay, something is happening. So, I kept hearing um, this issue about crosswalks and their colors. And I've noticed that because of the, I think, snow and the salt, everything, they are really fading away. So, I just wanna bring this up if a city has any plan to repaint them or is there any specific season to it? Because it's getting darker uh, so early, it's really difficult for drivers to see uh, the crosswalks. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, I um, I'm serving on Sajak. Uh, but now I'm on the city council and I um, know that Jennifer and Lauren uh, are already on that committee. So, I just wanna ask city council opinion, uh, what would you like to me do? Just be there or until election, just observe other, any other committee meeting? So, thank you.
My opinion is that you're, you're duly appointed, you're on the committee. Um, at the, after the election, we go through a process of appointing people to committees, so just stay there.
Thank you. Um, I actually have nothing within um, the role of city council person, but I do wanna celebrate that my oldest son has bought a property back in Vermont. It's not in Montpelier, unfortunately. It's down in Stafford. Uh, but I've been spending a lot of time down there because it's an empty house, checking it out after all these storms. But uh, he did get the um, welcome to Vermont stipend. Uh, it was wonderful. I mean, it's gonna, he's moving from Texas, so it's a, it's a huge help. He does work remotely, his wife will work remote. They're both in a house that definitely needs remote work. Uh, and they have wonderful optic fiber. So, Vermonter's optic fiber is available in the most amazing places. So, we made a great progress on that, really. It's wonderful to know, anyway.
Great. Uh, Carrie?
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude and appreciation uh, to my, my district three council member mate Jennifer. And I'm very sorry that we'll be losing you and I've been really enjoyed serving alongside you and it's gonna be quite a loss to us. Um, I know you will still be around and you'll still be connected in some way, which is great. But I just wanted to thank you for, for being here all this time and, and being able to work together.
And I have two, two things to say. One is that uh, the uh, city Vermont, Montpelier Housing Committee met uh, last night and we have been, had been talking over the last couple of meetings about coming to the council with a proposal for a charter change to uh, put a, a just cause eviction proposal on the ballot. And after working very hard and having a couple of very productive meetings, we decided that we're just not, not there yet. Uh, there, it's a complicated issue. There are people uh, looking at it with a whole bunch of different perspectives, but that's why you didn't hear anything from us tonight about uh, a proposal for just cause eviction. But we, part of our vote was that we are going to keep working on it and uh, not, that's, who's to say we might be coming back again next year with the, with a proposal for that? But uh, the committee was appointed and got rolling kind of late and so that's where we are with that. Um, the other thing I, I share with the councillor Brown. Jen, I'm really sorry to see you go. It's been great working with you, sitting next to you and sharing the contact and all those, these meetings. I really valued what you brought to the council and you will be missed. City Clerk's report.
Sarah, and I have no report. I'm just filling in for John tonight. Very happy to, for this time here.
City Manager's report.
Um, sure, a couple of things. One, um, to respond to the immediate question. So, crosswalks are a problem in the winter, uh, the salt and things from paving really does fade them. We try to do them as soon as in s- uh, the spring as we can. Um, the, it has to have a certain temperature for the heat, for the paint to stick. So, it has to be, I think it's about forty degrees overnight, so until it gets warm enough consistently to do that throughout the city. So, usually May or so, we start painting crosswalks uh, and sometimes we'll do it again in the fall if they've started to fade before the winter, but they almost never survive the winter. So, it's a constant, it's an annual problem. And then, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bill, can I ask another question about the crosswalks? As we were talking in, in the, in the budget uh, materials? And one of the things we were talking about was street lighting. Is there a way to set up the street lights so that they align or there's special lighting going down onto the uh, crosswalks?
Um, yes, and I would probably wanna get some more expertise to respond to that. Uh, I believe when we redid the ornamental lights, not the high overhead lights, several years ago, we did, they are set up to do that. But the level of those lights isn't so high that it doesn't really throw as much as you'd like. And that was, the council at the time wanted to keep them lower. Uh, so, we can, we'll look at that. Okay, we'll get some more expertise.
I scare myself about people that I almost hit because I don't see them.
And you had another. And then, yes, so the other thing I have, and this is a logistical issue, I apologize for this, but uh, somehow or other the group that works on the annual welcome legislators reception, which we've not had for a couple of years. So, the good news is we decided to have it coming back. All great, it's all being organized. It's been organized for Thursday, January twenty-sixth. So, um, it is five to seven. So, we, we could, we could start at seven. We could have two weeks to publicize. We could move the twenty-sixth meeting back to the twenty-fifth and just go to the reception in case, unless there's petitions that come in on the twenty-sixth that we need to deal with. Or we just keep it at six-thirty and we all have to leave at six. And, you know, unfortunately, part of the whole point of it is for us to interact with legislators, so. Uh, but I just learned this today and uh, I would bring it to your immediate attention.
Thank you.
Lauren, what do you wanna do?
How often do petitions come in on that last day? I mean, not that it's indicative of.
Really, if ever. I mean, I shouldn't say, no, I shouldn't say if ever. We do occasionally about, it's been years since we could find out. You may not know, you don't know, the, John usually knows, the clerk usually knows if someone's circulating one. You know, we usually know because we see people out about it. We've heard, read something on social media that I haven't heard of any certain, you know, petitions being circulated this year, other than election petitions. Uh, but, yeah, so it might be a good bet.
You, Carrie?
Yeah, I, I just saw that too and I was so excited to see that it was back and then realized, oh, we're not actually gonna be able to be there for much of it. Um, it does feel, it, I feel like there's a great benefit to us being able to be at that event and for the whole thing. And so, um, if we could move our meeting a little bit, I think that would be great. And so, and maybe the thing to do is to just start a little bit later. I know it makes a very long day, but um, I, I think I'd be a little nervous about doing it the day before if we're worried about any petitions that came in on the twenty-sixth. And I guess that'd be my question is what would, what would we do then if we didn't have that meeting scheduled for that night?
We would, so, so the, uh, that's a great question. I think the, and, and um, you may be able to get this answer quicker than, than I can. Uh, but I think the answer is that, you know, we don't have a lot of leeway, really, in what to, you know, it's, it's a procedural vote to vote, to add it to the ballot. So, we could have very quick five, you know, could even be an online meeting. We could have a, you know, we could meet here at five and then go to Capitol. You know, I, I think there's, or have just that meeting. Uh, we could warn the meeting for Capitol Plaza, do it. Yeah, there, you know, I mean, I, I think it would really be a fun tree and then we'd have to vote to finalize. The, the thing you wouldn't be able to do is, I think, is if we knew a petition was coming, you'd have to amend the final ballot from the night before. But I, you know, again, I think we could find out if, if the clerk knows whether or not there's something circulating. I certainly haven't heard of any.
So, Bill, if we put our meeting back on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, but we also advertised however long we had to ahead of time for one on the twenty-sixth, like noon, remote?
Well, the problem is the deadline for submitting petitions is end of business.
Oh, okay.
So, it would have to be at least, you know, four-thirty or five.
All right, but, but can we advertise without it ahead? Okay, and then if, if we don't need it, open and close it.
Yeah, I think the issue is more just the logistics of doing it. And, and you know, to be fair, we have publicized that our meeting is on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, but we could do a quick, you know, we've got a two-week blitz of changing the night if we had to.
Uh, Dave Delkor.
Yeah, I may have misheard, but I thought you said that the uh, like, for the local action tax charter change was the twenty-sixth?
Right, well, that would have to be changed.
Okay. Right.
That hasn't been warned yet, so um, yeah, and the same thing with the public hearings on the budget, all that would have to move. But um, that's, we can do that. We have time to do that. Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I, do we have to move this or just direct you there?
I think we should. I think, consider, if we're gonna make a change, a formal change, either in the date or starting time or something of the meetings, it'd be good to have a formal action council, since you voted to, to set the schedule in the first place.
So, I would move that we reschedule the meeting and all agenda items currently scheduled for January twenty-sixth to January twenty-fifth. That's right, dude. Um, and that we schedule a meeting for five o'clock, four, four forty-five on um, January twenty-sixth. But we don't have to.
You know what we could do? Is, because the clerk's office is also gonna have to verify signatures if they come in. Maybe we could do it for like noon on Friday.
Cool.
And then it could just be a Zoom meeting at noon on Friday, the twenty-seventh. Gives them time to verify signatures and it's still time to do the ballot. Does that work for people?
Mm-hmm. So, that's your motion?
That's my motion. I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? There we are. Problem averted, yes.
That was my work list.
Okay. Um, councillor Brown, you're, by not being here in person, you're missing out on baklava. So, now we have a.
From Turkey.
Oh my gosh, that's one of my favorite things on the planet.
How soon can you be here?
I, I, I don't have a car. I have no way to get there. Sorry.
Okay, so now.
Should I call Chief Norton and send him?
Lights and sirens. So, now, item eleven, proposal for housing and conservation project on Gould Hill Road. And we, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session. Well, someone else is gonna make the motion.
I, I, you know, I don't, I, I move to find that premature general public knowledge of property. Uh, part, part.
Real estate.
Oh, it's real estate. I move that we enter executive session to discuss the property on Gould Hill pursuant of one VSA three thirteen A.
Three seventeen, section thirteen.
And is there a second?
Actually, she's right. It's three thirty is wrong.
Okay.
I second. Okay. I second.
Any discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion includes that the uh, city manager will go into the meeting with the man, with us and the parks director? Okay, and uh,
in the baklava.
It, and are we anticipating that we would be uh, coming back?
Will we be voting tonight, Alex? Okay, so we will be coming back out for action.
Okay, so we will be returning. Um, probably the, so we can be on on, on, in the public, yeah. I would think so.
Right.
All right, and uh, so I will get out of this meeting and go to the executive session because.
Pretty scary, yeah.
Yeah. So, Carrie, you logging into executive session two and we'll see you in the other room. And we'll see you in the other room.